Join me for the pledge. Chief Dale, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of solemn meditation or prayer. Pleased in your prayer or meditation, remember our custodian here, Mr. Billy, who was going through something, and Mayor Dick Moore and his family as they go through what they go through. Andrew, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Here.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanke.
President Dawson.
Present.
We have a quorum. Just a reminder to everybody on the council that make sure we're speaking to the mic, and if anyone in the audience except our emergency management people have on a device that's going to disrupt the meeting, we ask that you turn it down. You guys are an exception, so we get that, but otherwise, please put your phones on vibrate or airplane mode. Minutes for approval for November 20th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Hines, a second by Mr. Crabtree. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstain, same sign, motion carries. Abstention? Did you abstain?
Objections.
Any objections? No, objections, I'm sorry. Presentation and introductions.
I hope everyone's day is going well so far. Just want to get right to it. We had a pretty serious fire here in Elkhart on January 8th. Our A-Shift Battalion was called to a house fire on Franklin Street. As we all know in the fire service, when the dispatcher says flames showing with possible entrapment, meaning residents are still inside, unable to get out, our heart rate picks up because the stakes are much higher. Thanks to the bravery, focus, training, and teamwork of the firefighters in this room, three lives were saved. I want to give these young men the opportunity to talk about their actions and then receive their awards. The first young man coming up, I actually coached him Pee-wee football, and he's here with his own family and children now, Mr. Ryan Chris.
So obviously, our job's a little different than the most jobs. We live together, we work together, we eat together. So that morning, I was cooking breakfast for my crew. We get the call, came in at 8:30, we're en route, crossing Third Street, dispatch tells us there's a family trapped upstairs with flames showing. As Chief Dale said, that changes things for us. I'm going over a list in my mind of what needs to be done. We show up on scene, active working structure fire. I get out of my rig, walk around, and I see a window, people trying to get out of it. So I know we need to get a ladder to them. My counterpart, who's also here, Derek Engelhardt, he knew what I was thinking, I knew what he was thinking, I think throughout the entire time. I don't think him and I said 12 words to each other. We just made it happen. We threw the ladder, I climbed up, took the window, I just, I told her, start handing me the children. So she's handing me the kids, I take a few steps down, Derek's backing me the whole time, start handing the kids to Derek, back up the ladder, repeat the process three times. I think from the time we showed up on scene until we got the mother down the ladder took us two minutes. And that's a credit to this department, to the training that we receive here, because we don't have to think about what we do when we show up, because it's repetition to us. So I want to thank the council, I want to thank Chief Dale, I'd like to thank the mayor for the opportunities we are given here at the Elkhart Fire Department, because they are second to none.
I'm firefighter Derek Engelhardt. My assignment is on truck 18 Back Step, as we call it, so I ride backwards behind the driver of truck 18. Just to hit on a couple of points, as like Ryan said, we train for these scenarios repetitively every day we're on shift. And luckily, that day, all of our training came together as a whole, as a group, as a department. This was an absolute team effort, and like Ryan said, we just clicked. We knew what had to be done without even hardly saying anything to each other. I had the ladder off the truck, it seemed like instantly, I don't, you know, I couldn't tell you a time on that. And yeah, we worked hand in hand, bringing out the family from the second story window. And it was just a great outcome. It was an absolute relief, you know, him handing me, you know, the two children, and then the mother at the end. It was just, it worked out very well for us that day. Again, it seems like an eternity when we're working, and then when it's all said and done, you finally get the facts and the breakdowns and the times and everything. Like I said, you know, two minutes is just, it's astonishing to us and as a whole. And again, that falls back on our absolute rigorous training that we do every single day, and it pays dividends at the end. Again, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, thank you for having us. This was a win for the Elkhart Fire Department for sure, and we are so thankful. And again, and a huge shout out to the mother. She did an absolute phenomenal job. She saved the lives of her children, as well as hers, in getting them out and helping us get them out. She deserves a huge credit. She is a rock star, for sure. So yeah, thank you guys very much.
These two young men definitely stood out, but as we've said in the fire service, everything on the fire ground is a team effort. So we have two plaques, a plaque each for these young men, but we're also going to distribute certificates to the entire A-Shift Battalion. I'd like Mayor Rod Robertson to come up and say a few words and then distribute the plaques.
I'd like to thank Chief Dale, and I'd also like to thank the shift as well. When we heard about what occurred, and then we literally began to think about not just the mother and the two kids, but we begin to think about the effort that was made in order to save them. As we well know, we stand, they stand on duty, and they're there when we are asleep, they're there when we are unaware that they are. And it's important for us to be able to recognize this type of effort, because it sends a message to our entire city. And so I'd like to thank, as Rodney just said, the entire fire department and their support system that's here with them as well, because they do work as a team. And so with that said, City of Elkhart is very proud to say that this particular effort turned out the way that we would hope that it would, but it wasn't just by chance. It was by the efforts and the bravery of the two that are standing behind me, but also the rest of those that are sitting in those seats, standing behind them. So thank you so much.
Okay, the first Meritorious Service Award is going to go to Ryan Chris. Just to quickly let you guys know what it says. For his quick and decisive actions and exemplary conduct in affecting the ladder rescue of the trapped occupants on the second floor at 912 West Franklin Street in Elkhart on Sunday, January 7th, 2024. Rescue One chauffeur Chris saved an adult female, two children, and two family pets. These actions are among the highest regard in the proud traditions of the fire service. Our next Meritorious Service Award, which says the exact same thing, goes to firefighter Derek Engelhardt. It's going to get a little tight up here, but I want to try to get the guys up here, if I can, maybe filed across if people want to take pictures, because we have, I want to get the entire battalion up here. Kind of come up, get your award from the mayor and shake his hand, and then kind of get in, make a line starting from the left, and then we'll just come across here. First person will be Battalion Chief Wade Snyder.
They just took off, that's what I just thought. Sorry about that. Yes, and everybody, you guys will all get a copy. Everybody will get an event.
Squad 2, Battalion A, Squad 2. Engine 3 from Battalion A. Medic 21. That concludes the awards tonight. Want to hold still, take a picture? Thanks, everybody, for coming out, and great job, fellas.
We're going to take about a five-minute break, so you guys come up here and take pictures and do what you need to do right in the council chamber, so.
Do you want to grab it and set it up over there?
I just want to set it up behind you for just a second.
Say a few words now.
Okay, you guys ready to scoot in?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we meet this Friday.
Hey, I appreciate everything.
I was happy for this, you guys.
I don't think, they didn't have any injuries or anything at that fire, did they? Got them all out, nobody got burned.
Everybody. Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. It's like so, so. What do you mean? I was surprised to get this, like, this has got some political ramifications, bro. Just keep us, you know, give us some cover, you know.
Rod?
Probably should have allowed them to be read and then replaced them once opened, but do we, I guess we do have the Rs in front of us? All right. With no time to read it, though, however, I hope that someone has the ability to tell us those changes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, Angie, would you read Proposed Ordinance on second reading, 24-0-01 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 24-O-01, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to Ordinance Number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 5100 and 5130 Middlebury Street, Elkhart, Indiana, 46516, from O Office District to B2 Community Business District.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second?
They'll move.
A motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Mishler, to pass this on second reading. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, Mike Huber, Director of Development Services, City of Elkhart. This ordinance is a rezoning ordinance. This is about a one-point acre piece of property. It's on Middlebury Street, just about 650 feet west of County Road 17, on the north side of Middlebury Street. So, it's kind of just as you approach the south entrance to the Amberwood Terrace Retail Plaza on County Road 17. Also immediately to the north of that is a cluster of industrial buildings west of Amberwood Terrace. The petitioner is Goodwill Industries. They're asking to rezone the property to allow for a B2 Community Business District zoning to allow for construction of one of their retail stores and collection sites. This was brought to the Plan Commission. This was approved by the Plan Commission with a 6-0 vote to pass to the, to the council with a dupeass recommendation. There was one person who attended and objected to the petition at the Plan Commission meeting. It was the owner of the one remaining residential property that is adjacent to the proposed location, but as he spoke, he indicated he's from Osceola and is a property owner investor who owns it as a rental property. He doesn't live in the property himself. Staff also recommended approval of this. I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, Goodwill's here this evening and can tell you a little bit about their plans with the project.
Mr. Mishler.
Are they requesting any TIF funds or abatements?
Nope.
Or anything like that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
So, I wanted to find out how close to other businesses as we're trying to convert County Road 17 to the new growth commensurate to the value of the land there. How far off of 17 are we?
It's about 650 feet west of County Road 17, at the entrance to the Amberwood Terrace. It 100% matches the commercial zoning district we would approve.
It matches. Are we saying then it's best use?
That's correct. That's correct.
Very good, thank you.
And that's what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan calls for in this area.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing then, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this?
Thank you. My name is George Lepiniotis. I'm an attorney with Creek Devault with offices at 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway in Michawak, Indiana. I represent Goodwill of Michiana. I'm joined tonight by Goodwill CEO Debbie Kobel. Debbie told me that she is proud to say that she started her journey at Goodwill, working as a store manager in Elkhart. So, I have before you a packet. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Goodwill, even though many of you already know the organization. Also wanted to reiterate just what positive impact Goodwill has on Elkhart and every other community that they're in. Goodwill is a great community partner. You'll notice that their mission statement is to empower people to live their most abundant lives, and they do that through three or four different missions, including the collection of retail goods, donation, drop-off centers. You asked about the highest and best use of that area, and that's a great point on why this would work there. First off, Goodwill already owns the old bank there and uses it as a donation drop-off point. They combine with the development that's already there in the old garden center. So, the entrance is actually already an existing entrance that doesn't necessarily add congestion to the area. But the plan here for this store would be to add a retail location, which is a second part, right? We donate things to Goodwill and they turn around and sell them. You'll notice they have 23 stores. I gave you some statistics, but the stores are all over Indiana, as well as into Illinois and Michigan. But you'll notice that there are only two markets where Goodwill of Michiana has multiple stores. The first is South Bend, the second is Elkhart. Here in Elkhart, they are invested in what we call the Elkhart North Store, which is up on Michawak Road. The second is the Concord Store on Sanford School Road. I've given you pictures of both as examples of what type of facility Goodwill runs. They are clean, well-lit. They are very organized facilities that attract people of various demographics and bring communities together. You'll also recall that Goodwill, in partnership with Heart City Health, is in the process of redeveloping the old Woodland Terrace Sears store. I say this because it is a point of pride and also indicative of what Goodwill brings to a community. Many communities are struggling with big box stores sitting vacant, and Heart City Health and Goodwill coming into this project. And really, despite some real big hurdles, committing themselves to that project shows you just how committed they are to being a community partner. This store would further that. The reality is that the site that we're asking for the rezoning, which is in your district, the fourth district, is largely surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. There are only two remaining residential lots. The objection you heard about it at Planning Commission was from the neighbor, and it was more along the lines of, I miss what that neighborhood maybe used to be. But those changes have happened, and it is, in fact, a very busy intersection and would be good for Goodwill's business. On the final page, we've included a potential site plan. This is very preliminary. It is simply an idea that we wanted to be sure you understood where they would hope to go with it. There is no current timeline for building, but it would, as resources and funding allows, that is the plan. But since they are in the process of purchasing it, due diligence requires that they get it rezoned for the purpose that they would be buying the land for. So, we appreciate your consideration and are open to any questions you might have.
Mr. Fish.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
It's exciting to know about your growth, but the only question I have is you've referred to an outlet. What is an outlet? I've never heard that term.
Goodwill has a single store, and I'll let the expert tell you, but there's a single outlet store.
Okay.
President CEO of Goodwill, 1805 Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. Our outlet store is where you can get things even cheaper than the Goodwill store. We sell it by the pound, and it is our last effort to keep it out of landfills before we actually start sending it to our vendors. We keep tons out of landfill between our stores and our outlet. Right now, stop by it for $1.49 a pound, $59 a pound, so, and then we'll start sending it and keep as much out of the landfill. It's in Gary.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to say it's good to see you feeling better. I know you were a little under the weather before, so it's good to see that. Will this location be strictly retail, or will there be any other, the other locations sometimes offer community outreach efforts and things, or will this just be retail only?
I believe it'll be strictly retail.
We'll keep our career center at the Concord Store, but again, with the renovation of the Sears building, all of our mission work for Elkhart will be moving into that location. Our Excel Center, so Elkhart has our highest student count of all four of our high schools for adults. We'll move our Nurse Family Partnership Program, our Second Chance. We wanted the Bayside to start automotive, our construction training that's already in place, so all those will be moved to that central location.
Thank you.
Hinky.
Just the timeline for completion of renovation on the tonight's action?
There isn't one yet. The timeline is the purchase agreement for the land. They are currently purchasing the land from its current owner, which is the, if you notice in the petition, the current owner of the land signed it. So, if you were to approve the rezoning tonight, the purchase of land would be completed within the next 30 days, and then thereafter, the conceptual phase would really begin on construction. But there is no hard timeline. As you heard, the Sears store is taking priority. So, this is more of a purchase of opportunity, if that makes sense.
So, you opened the door. I wanted to ask about the ownership of Sears. Would Goodwill purchase that property?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, Goodwill is in a joint venture to purchase part of that property. There's two tenants in the Sears store, Heart City Health and Goodwill.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Can't say we're firefighters who save lives, but.
Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing then, we turn it back to the council, any other council discussion? Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final?
Got a motion for Mr. Mishler, second for Mrs. Hines, for third and final. Would you read this ordinance by title and do a roll call vote?
Proposed Ordinance 24-O-01, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to Ordinance Number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 5100 and 5130 Middlebury Street, Elkhart, Indiana, 46516, from O Office District to B2 Community Business District. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no table ordinances or resolutions. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-02 by title on first reading, please? 02R. Thank you, Ms. Hinky.
Two is not an R, just 03 and 04 Rs.
03 and 04?
It was just 03 and 04, not two.
Thanks, Angie.
Proposed Ordinance 24-O-02, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as 53893 North Park Avenue and 53847 North Park Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. She read Proposed Ordinance 24-24-O-03-R by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 24-O-03-R, an ordinance appropriating $9,400,000 from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the LaSalle-McKinley and Benham Area Water and Sewer Project.
Thank you. We'll assign this to the Finance Committee as well. Resolutions, would you read Proposed Resolution 24-R-03 by title, please?
Proposed Resolution 24-R-03, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provisions of service to the area commonly known as 53893 North Park Avenue and 53847 North Park Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, a proposed annexation area.
I got a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mrs. Hines, Mr. Huber.
This is a resolution, which is the first step for just approving the fiscal plan for the proposed annexation of the Jet Technologies property on Johnson Street. It's about a nine-acre parcel. It represents about $2.3 million worth of assessed valuations. Jet Technologies, the property's currently in the county, they're currently on septic system. The septic system is going to fail. They need to have access to the sewer and water. In order to get the sewer and water, they're asking voluntarily to be annexed into the city of Elkhart. The fiscal plan identified about $1,600 in street maintenance additional expenses, about $500 in additional expenses related to some police stuff. Not very significant. It's going to generate over $40,000 a year of new levy to the city, so this is going to be a net positive overall from a fiscal, from a fiscal point of view for the city of Elkhart. Jet Technologies is in the plastics industry. They make a lot of things for a lot of our local industries, including, I think, the boat and marine industry and a couple other areas. They've been in business in Elkhart since 1996, so they've got a 27-year track record. This will allow them, if they need to in the future, to be able to expand by moving on to the, to the septic, or off of the septic and onto the sewer. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the fiscal plan. I think somebody from Jet might be online as well.
Questions?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Hinky.
What's the exact location?
It is on, it's actually on Park, North Park Avenue, but it's on Johnson, Johnson Street North, I think between Bristol Street and County Road 6.
I was just trying to figure out whose district it was in.
It's on the west side of, I'm assuming that's one. Yeah, I think it's one.
I was gonna say, usually, third district brings all the money in, but I'll let him have one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huber. Seeing now the council discussion, open up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Please come forward. Seeing now, turn it back to the council, any other council discussion? Seeing then, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on this resolution?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings, any other new businesses? Any other new business? Mr. Hinky.
I won't mention you, Mr. Espar, so you get a pass. So, I would like, you know, by the next meeting, I think all of us should be getting pretty routine cash balance sheets as originally designed. We haven't also heard from the fire department as far as billing rates, if we have updated our Medicare rate, the prevailing rate as it's called, and the.
Do I get a motion, the second to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mrs. Hines. Mr. Huber?
This is a resolution, which is the first step for just approving the fiscal plan for the proposed annexation of the Jet Technologies property on Johnson Street. It's about a nine-acre parcel. It represents about $2.3 million worth of assessed valuations. Jet Technologies, the property is currently in the county. They're currently on septic system. The septic system is going to fail. They need to have access to the sewer and water. In order to get the sewer and water, they're asking voluntarily to be annexed into the city of Elkhart. The fiscal plan identified about $1,600 in street maintenance additional expenses, about $500 in additional expenses related to some police stuff. Not very significant. It's going to generate over $40,000 a year of new levy to the city. So this is going to be a net positive overall from a fiscal point of view for the city of Elkhart. Jet Technologies is in the plastics industry. They make a lot of things for a lot of our local industries, including, I think, the boat and marine industry and a couple of other areas. They've been in business in Elkhart since 1996, so they've got a 27-year track record. This will allow them, if they need to in the future, to be able to expand by moving on to the septic, or off of the septic and onto the sewer. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the fiscal plan. I think somebody from Jet might be online as well.
Questions?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Hanky.
What's the exact location?
It is on, it's actually on Park, North Park Avenue, but it's on Johnson, Johnson Street North, I think between Bristol Street and County Road 6.
I was just trying to figure out whose district it was in.
It's on the west side of, I'm assuming that's one. Yeah, I think it's one.
I was gonna say, usually, third district brings all the money in, but I'll let him have one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Seeing no other council discussion, open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Please come forward. Seeing none, turn it back to the council. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on this resolution?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Any other new businesses? Any other new business? Mr. Hanky?
I won't mention you, Mr. Espar, so you get a pass. So I would like, you know, by the next meeting, I think all of us should be getting pretty routine cash balance sheets as originally designed. We haven't also heard from the fire department as far as billing rates, if we have updated our Medicare rate, the prevailing rate as it's called, and the information I've been asking for for quite a number of meetings regarding write-offs, the amount of write-offs comparison to net bill. But I wanted to add in there, from Public Works, our fines are extremely low. I just noticed that we're going to fine Simington Conservatory $300 for a breach that has been a chronic breach, and quite honestly, it doesn't even cover the labor going in for the breach. It just seems like we're just way low. Bimbo Bakery is another one, but chronic fines should have an escalation of some kind because we're just taking it on the chin, and then our taxpayers are footing the bill because $300 doesn't do anything as a bulk. Again, I'm asking for any and all, I know Jamie is out right now, any and all direct and indirect tax dollars expended and/or encumbered for the Main Street Plaza. You know, I think there's a lot of talk around the Plaza and renovation of that we have nothing, but it's been in the minutes, and now those minutes are a little bit more concealed. So I want to know how much money the city has already put towards that project without having monies sent through the council. Finally, redevelopment minutes. Either, they need to be a little bit more complete because they just say past, there's no conversations posted, it's hard to know what the questions were. It is simply such a small amount of narration for a whole meeting. It doesn't even cover one page. And so it really doesn't give council much. If we are reading our minutes, it doesn't give us a whole lot to go on. Aurora Capital, this is Aurora Capital, and I'm not sure what we get from it, but we get that in our docket. And then redevelopment, a lot of stuff with millions and millions of dollars goes through redevelopment. On the other hand, there's just not a lot for us to go on as far as real conversation of the meeting. So they're very much pulled back and narrated. Outcomes are sent to us, but we need to know a little bit more about the conversation since we represent the people who generally would have any objection or conversation. If I just want to know what the votes are, I know because the next issue comes to us, right? I need to know any of the other information that would have come. I'm just asking for them maybe to put a little bit more in the minutes. If they want to know how to do it, please see Angie.
Any other business? Mr. Michler?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank our street department for putting in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work since this winter weather has been hitting us, as well as Central Garage for helping to maintain those vehicles. Also, I want to thank the Parks Department for having their pop-up farmer's market at High Dive Pavilion. It was a very cold day, but it was still very nice to see vendors in there and shoppers as well. It's, for me, it's very important to have these pop-ups because it continues the continuity of partnership with these vendors to keep them coming back and the farmer's market alive throughout these colder winter months. So hopefully, when spring comes, we can have an even bigger, better one. Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on Aaron's comments about the street department. Our street department did a great job with all this snow that just kept coming and kept coming and kept coming. But I just think as residents with vehicles on the street, we need to move them. You know, you can look at the vehicles that got plowed in and know they haven't been moved in over a week. And I think it's time that we step up the enforcement of our ordinance to say, if these vehicles aren't moved every three days, we need to encourage them, people, to move them. Because I even saw a scooter parked on the side, and the truck had to go around it. Why would somebody park a scooter on a main street, on Middlebury Street? And so I just think we need to encourage these people more to move these vehicles off the street for our guys, and they do even a better job.
Any other business? Well, I'd just like to thank the entire city for what goes on because, starting with the 911 center to the police dispatch, to the fire guys getting out there and building the grounds, it takes the whole team to make this happen. While the street department and Central Garage, I mean, you see their story, but I mean, somebody's got to dispatch somebody somewhere to make sure that, especially if there's an emergency, that something gets done. And so it takes the entire city to handle what we just handled, and they did a great job. And I like to speak in favor of those because you get, everybody can tell you whether there's icy road, you know, and why haven't they been down, or I've only seen one truck, you know. So these guys and gals are doing a great job in our city of making sure that in emergency situations and weather situations, you know, from top to bottom, we're getting it done. So I want to thank the entire city employees. Reports from Mayor Board of Works, Board of Safety, Department Heads?
Well, I want to, first of all, thank you for the acknowledgements of the departments during the storm. Secondly, we have decided to take a different approach towards these storms. When I say a different approach, what we've been able to do is now with 311 and the press releases that we're trying to make to the entire public, it's a continuous effort throughout the storm. It's not just when the storm is approaching. But what we are able to, what we're doing now is sending out messages continuously throughout it, because this was, this was a long, wide-ranging, diverse storm. And we actually had to battle everything from cold to wind to ice, well, to snow to ice, and that's what we're into now. So this has been, you know, at least 10, 12 days that we have been working through this. And so it doesn't, it isn't just one release and then you watch TV. It's to Councilman Curry's point, we reached a point where we had shoveled the arteries in the main thoroughfares, and then we got to the sides and the cul-de-sacs. We ran into, obviously, cars that were there and needed to be parked away from the curb so that we could get to them. And sometimes citizens don't get that information. So I just want to encourage the continuous communication as we go through storms like this. We get wonderful updates from AEP and others that are our partners throughout the storm, but we have not put them out as we've gotten them in real time. And so now we're putting them out in real time, and we're asking through press releases for folk to be able to comply to some of the things necessary in order to make the clearance of these weather-related incidents as easy as possible for everybody involved. So we take our hats off to all of those as all of you have just articulated. But it's a continuous effort throughout the course of a storm to continue to stay on top of it and ride with it. And so with that said, they have worked hard in order to do so, and so my hat is off to them as well.
Any other reports?
Andy Jones, Airport Director. Just kind of wanted to remind you that we do have an airport too, and we've been able to keep that open throughout the winter as well. It's a real challenge, and it's a science to keep the airport open during this kind of weather, constantly doing friction measurement reports like today with the ice, knowing when to apply chemicals between 26 and 32 degrees, knowing when you have to put sand down, coming in at 3:00 in the morning so our base aircraft can get out of our airport or come in. So, you know, keeping the snow, the snow that we plow below 18 inches along the edges of the surfaces so that you don't have a wingtip catching the snowdrift. So we've got some newer people out there, but they're employees, but they're doing a good job. It takes years to really become good at what they're doing, but just, I'm very happy with the job they're doing. And thanks to the mayor, I was just corresponding with Bradley and the mayor today, thanking him for the equipment that we have. It's so key to have the right equipment at the airport to be able to do the job, and we currently have that. We'll be anxious to get a new snow broom in August, but the one that we have is still working and so critical. So just wanted to let you know that if you've got a flight, which, we did have a charter that left the other day, we were able to get them out without a hitch. Thanks.
Jameson Zarnicki, Superintendent of Parks. It's a slow night, so I thought you guys would enjoy just a little bit more reporting. But really, I'll take the time to just say thank you to everybody who showed up to the Walker Park Engagement Sessions. We appreciate that. Thank you for those of you who have been to our events and our programs. If you haven't yet, you missed a good one with the air escape for the Taylor Swifties of the area, very popular this past weekend at Nibco Ice Park, a lot of music, a lot of good fans. So encourage you, there's still weekends ahead of you to go out to Nibco Ice Park if you haven't been. It's a blast, but it's great to have that amenity. And then McNaughton Park Hill has been very popular this season, so just wanted to give a shout-out to the team. Appreciate their work and keeping it going. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Neighborhood Association reports? Any Neighborhood Association reports? Mrs.?
Thank you. The residents who called in for the Neighborhood Association packets, thank you for wanting to help out our neighborhoods and be more involved and increase communication. So with that, I want to also report on the end of the year, my 311 report for our six districts. So I got a couple of requests for that. So I want to let you know, and if you're attending, thank you. If not, come back later, and you're seeing this, but out of the 1,730 submissions, 1,657 was resolved from the 311 complaints or issues that were out there. So the rest are still in the working, so we're still working on it. So I'd like to thank you for calling in and inquiring about that, and also for the city of Elkhart, all the department heads, departments that came together to work through the 311 request. And I'd like to also encourage all citizens to go to the website and to report any issues, download the 311 app, and also call the city because they will report that so we can continue to make our city awesome. And also, too, just want to thank you for doing this, all I have to say, because I can't read. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Curry?
Yeah, just a quick report for the Pemmeran Neighborhood Association, and we try to make our neighborhood the best it can be, and working together is what we're trying to promote. Like, the people that park on the street, we've asked them if they would come to the meeting to share driveways with people that have extra space. I know on my driveway, I could accommodate two extra cars, and we're asking that you share and come over and park off the street in other neighbors' driveways until the trucks go by. And we don't think that's asking too much, but the people that tend to have the vehicles on the streets in the way, they're in the way for the school buses, they don't come to the meetings. So hopefully, we can get that message out of people sharing driveways during these times, and also, we're asking people to turn your porch light on in the morning because we have a lot of kids walking to school, and turn them on in the evening because our mail carrier come after dark. So we just hoping we can get those messages out for our community to be a little safer. Thank you.
One more?
Yes, Mr. Hanky?
This is for the Woodland Estates Neighborhood Association, and I don't belong to it, but they did send me a note in regard to the excellent cleanup by the street department, so I sent that on to Mike Zooks to share with his team. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Hey, at this point, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything germane to the council? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Acceptance of communications, I'm sorry, scheduling of committee meetings. Finance committee meeting, how does Thursdays look for you guys? You are?
Karen Oliver.
You're on all of them?
I knew you would just want me to come on.
Yes, we need your expertise.
I'm actually, I...
Next Thursday?
Well, next, a week from now, I'm good.
Okay, all right. We'll set something out next Thursday, probably about 5:30, 6:00. All right? Okay. Now acceptance of communications. Got a motion by Mr. Michler, second by Mr. Fish to accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pole, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Got a motion by Mr. Michler, second by Mr. Crabtree. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.